Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Welcome to our Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, March 9th. Please stand and join me in the pledge. Join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Okay. The mission of the White Plains School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence as we reflect on the loss of Mr. Harold Tim Moore, a teacher, house administrator, and interim assistant principal at the high school from 1968 to 2004; Mr. John Owens, assistant principal and principal at George Washington, Post Road, Battle Hill, Rochambeau, and Ridgway from 1955 to 1988; Ms. Frances Welch, elementary education teacher at Ridgway from 1958 to 1983; Mr. Fred Woodworth, physical education teacher at the high school from 1956 to 1982. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll have announcements, just a brief announcements from board members. I think we all got to go to the five schools fundraiser by the elementary schools. It was a great evening and I would say a successful night for our elementary schools. And just, I think we're just very grateful that we have parents and PTA that want to do this to benefit our schools. Also, we had our Equity Committee meeting and we continue to strive forward to really learn and understand bias, what it means, the impacts, so that we can, you know, avoid these behaviors and model the behaviors we want to see in our district from all staff and colleagues.
I attended the wake for Tim Moore, who I met in 1974 when I started dating some 10th grade girl from White Plains who I subsequently married. Tim Moore was one of the great administrators and in a long line of just wonderful people who have worked in the district from 1974 through today. There's just great administrators and staff, teaching staff and non-teaching staff. And he was known for standing over in his office and looking at the student parking lot with his binoculars on to see who was leaving school. I'm not gonna, there's more of that story, I'm not gonna say anything about it. But anyway, I attended that.
I'll mention a few things. So I attended the Monster Project Art Show opening reception at the high school. So this was a collaboration between the first graders at Post Road School with, I guess, Mrs. Engels' art classes, along with the National Art Honor Society with advisor Jessica Jordan. And it was fabulous. Basically, these first graders did these art projects of monsters and then they were interviewed by these high school students to describe what their monsters were, what they represented. There was a whole list of questions that the Art Honor Society students had, you know, curated. And then based on the responses, the high school students had to write up, you know, the description of the monster and then recreate the monster their own way. It was really incredible and, you know, just lots of talent there, really, really cute. I also went to Invention Convention at Church Street School, again, really great, sort of like a science fair, but it was very kid-centered. You really felt like the students really had done the work and come up with the ideas. So really great. And then the final thing I'll mention is I went to Post Road PTA meeting and they had had therapists come in and talk about happy parents, happy kids. It turned out to be a very intimate meeting. There were maybe a dozen people there and, you know, it was sort of, I felt like the senior member of the group, not having any elementary school kids, but I was able to sort of be a part of this conversation, which was really well done, so.
Do we have any more announcements?
Just quickly, I attended the ballroom dancing at MAS.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
My son's in fourth grade, so that's a grant from the Friends of White Plains, generous grant every year for a lot of our elementary schools. And I was happy to see my son was very sad that he couldn't do the hustle anymore.
At home.
And I attended the diversity job fair. We hosted up at Highlands and our human resources department did an incredible job organizing and executing a well-attended day from districts as far north as Arlington down to Pelham. So we had a great showing at that. And I also, I snuck in early to the Monster Project and it was, if you haven't seen it, they re-hung all the pictures down at Post Road now, so they'll be on display until the end of the year.
Great, yeah.
So be it, see ya.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I just had two things. We finance met, we talked a little bit about what we're gonna talk about today, put some more of the budget. And as Kane did, I snuck into the diversity job fair at the end of the day as well. I think it was just as busy at the end of the day as it was at the beginning of the day. So it was great, great, great work there.
Congratulations, HR. Next, we'll go to the superintendent's report.
And thanks, Eastview, for being here.
Yes, Eastview in the house.
Thank you, everybody. I think we do have, and we're very excited about the presentation this evening about our proposed preliminary budget. Before I move into that, something that might be on your mind, just a quick update about the COVID-19, the so-called coronavirus. The district is doing everything it possibly can to over-communicate with our community, the greater, both the educational community and the greater community. Every bit of information that we receive, we are sharing. We're doing our best to answer questions and to make sure that our parents and our guardians know that we are going to take every step possible to make sure that our children remain healthy and safe, even during a time of uncertainty. We will continue to communicate. The best practice that we can do right now in order to observe wellness would be to stay home when we're sick, wash our hands, keep our hands out of our face, and make sure that we're seeking healthcare advice if we have any concerns, but most importantly, staying home when we're sick. I did just a little while ago, a live Q and A where we went through some of the questions and concerns that parents and guardians had related to what would happen if the school district closed. I can tell you that our faculty and staff members and our team are working to make sure that there is a plan in place in the unlikely event that we close for an extended period of time. We did receive guidance today from the State Department of Education as well as the New York Department of Health that provided us with a framework to determine whether or not we need to close schools. We've been waiting for that for a few days and we're happy to have it. It's a 24-hour period in an instance where a student or an adult has been identified as testing positive for the virus. So we'll continue to communicate any additional updates and changes with our entire community right now. We're taking events on a case-by-case basis, those that we can make adjustments to, we're happy to do it. The district has not canceled events, the district has not canceled field trips. Everything is being taken on a case-by-case basis and we think that that's a nuanced approach and a reasonable approach. One of the things that everybody has been stressing is that communities will fare best when they work together and when they do what they can to reduce stress and reduce anxiety. If you keep a 24-hour news cycle channel on your TV, guarantee you your anxiety level will come up. If you get updates regularly and make sure that you're vetting them, so for instance, if you're getting them from us, you know, that will give you the information you need without sort of keeping that background noise on all the time and the ticker-tate of, you know, every time a case has been identified. So we're gonna continue to follow the guidance and make sure that we're doing everything we can to be prepared. I need to publicly thank all of our faculty, staff members, and the district for everything that they've been doing to support our children and our community. And I also want to thank our principals and, most importantly, our facilities folks. Mr. Stefanelle and our team at the facilities level have really been sparing no, you know, they're doing everything they possibly can to make sure that our facilities and common spaces are cleaned and ready for our kids at all times. So thank you.
And even our moms of White Plains, I have seen compliments about, you know, kids coming home and talking about, you know, how clean and, you know, all the really good things we're doing in the buildings to keep kids safe.
Everything. Yeah, so the question was, do we clean after events, even on the weekend? I could tell you absolutely. In fact, I sat on a panel, the Westchester-Putnam PTA meeting this Saturday and I waved at the team. The guys were going in and out and cleaning the rooms as we were in there and then they would come in the cafeteria and clean after as soon as we leave. So that is absolutely a great point. That is something that folks should be aware of, we are cleaning constantly. So thanks, Frank.
Yeah, and if I can just add thanks as well, because these are the questions that float by us and it's just so, I think it's comforting to at least let people know that nothing is being spared in terms of the attention our schools are getting. So, you know, kudos to you, Frank, and the staff as well, and I hope that you definitely pass this on to them. It's part of the important work we all do. So all of us, regardless of where we sit, contribute to the overall health of our district, you know, emotionally, physically, and academically. Thank you.
But your staff is really on the front lines there.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
We have been in communication with the county very closely. In fact, County Executive Vladimir was here this morning with the superintendents. We are coordinating our efforts. We will be participating in daily telephone call updates which will facilitate for the superintendents to be able to get on and to hear updates from the county regularly. And our hope is that by working together as a Westchester County community, we can better support each other and mitigate the situation moving forward. A lighter note, Saturday is scheduled to be the St. Patrick's Day Parade and I want to remind everybody that the Friends of White Plains are hosting a lunch immediately following. No? Am I wrong?
Maybe not.
Ooh, well, okay, but so let me say this. If the parade doesn't go on, right, then the event won't go on?
Parade will go on without the event.
We're not sure about the event, okay. All right, don't give me that thing, I'll keep retweeting it and people won't know. Well, hopefully, hopefully, the events will be able to take place. But even if it doesn't, thank you to the Friends for always being there and always attempting to make sure that they're supporting our children. So regardless, and whenever it does happen again, we can think of another lunch. Census Awareness Day, the 31st of March, really important. We have been working closely with the city and also with the county to make sure that everybody remembers to participate in the upcoming census. Our entire district will be participating in Census Awareness Day on the 31st. And again, a big thank you to Carolines, WPTA, all of our faculty and staff members who signed up for First Book. The district got 40,000 books. Thank you, Frank, for also finding space for those so we distribute them. But we're really excited to be able to give books to all of our children as well as part of our census campaign and we also hope to be able to create book, what did we call it?
Hobo libraries.
Book pantries. Book pantries and mobile libraries, yeah, absolutely. So thank you again for all your support there. And I will talk about the budget. Thank you. So again, thanks to everybody who helped to not only create the preliminary budget but also that provided insight into our long-range plan as well as our strategic plan, not just this year but in years past, because as you're going to see as we go through, the proposed budget is really predicated on all the planning that we had put forth even years ago and you're seeing it follow through year to year. Everything that we do is predicated again on our vision, mission, and core beliefs. You're going to see our strategic priorities interwoven into this proposed budget. And we always have the slide because it's important to remember why planning is important. Those are just some of the things that we deal with. We didn't have time to put COVID-19 up on there, but you know, as an example, we really don't know. There's a lot of uncertainty and planning is important so that we have a strong fiscal plan as well as a sustainable plan moving forward. Effective and efficient in terms of the way we manage the district's resources, how we allocate or reallocate resources depending upon need, making sure that we stay healthy into the future. And we want to also make sure that we're able to maintain our programs. Last thing any of us wants to do is reduce opportunities for students in the district. And the board has been very clear about that in terms of our budget, in terms of what our proposals are, making sure that we are able to project that we can sustain any programmatic increases into the future as well. And of course, the decisions that we make today have a long-term impact on the future. Just a recap of the meetings, just some of the formal meetings that we've had thus far with long-range planning, instructional budget, and the non-instructional budget. Of course, this is a continuous cycle of improvement and we are engaged in a full-on review constantly, well, pretty much constantly, in a myriad of areas throughout the district. You know that the district is a big, dynamic organization and we're very fortunate that we have folks who are attending and working on and committees that are attending to and working on many areas every year. This year, we're looking at dual-language and social studies and writing, SEL opportunities for our students, as well as additional climate and culture reviews that we did with, in conjunction with a university at Rochambeau and Post Road. Our next steps, we're gonna be looking at elementary guidance as well as phys ed activities, health, and we're doing a full community communications audit and, of course, Science 7 through 12. We would look always to create efficiencies within the budget where we can. We want to make sure that every single dollar that's spent, that's encumbered, is going to the right place where it's gonna have the biggest impact on our children. And you're gonna see that as we get a little further into the presentation, that the majority, the vast majority of the spending plan is really squarely centered in the program where it should be. Okay, so here are sort of the nuts and bolts in terms of the summary. This year, in terms of a change and what's prescribed by law through tax levy, we're at 2.91%. We are within the tax cap. We have no intention, had no intention of seeking to pierce that cap. We are mindful of property taxes and mindful that the majority of our budget is supported by the community. Moving forward, we see in terms of the budget-to-budget, 2.94%. Our sources of revenue, again, 83% is property taxes and we are continuing to fight and to lobby to make sure that we receive additional support in foundation aid and state aid. Many of you know, the district is about $12 million behind in where it should be in foundation aid and we are working with our elected officials to bring more of those dollars back to White Plains to support our children. Very, very little support elsewhere throughout the budget. We keep this slide in here because we think it's important for the public to recognize that it's not always a 2% increase related to the tax cap. Depending upon the year, depending upon the Consumer Price Index, it's 2% or less. So you can see over the years, there have been years where it's below 2%. Indeed, we're at a year where it's below 2%, 1.81%. And over the time since the inception of the tax cap, we are down where we could have been, about, if it was a true 2%, $6.6 million. Giving you a sense of the tax levy limit at a glance, and I apologize, this is all available on the district's website as well and you'll be able to see this and certainly we'll be having more conversations moving forward. Again, tax cap levy percentage at the bottom is 2.91%. And folks, we're, just so we have a sense ballpark, we assess that on the average assessed home, the increase would be just about $20 a month in terms of this budget that's within the tax cap. And you're gonna see in just a couple of minutes how exciting this budget is and how much it's going to provide for our children while staying within the tax cap, which is really fantastic. We do have areas of concern related to the executive budget that was put forward. This, of course, is the governor's first budget that he puts out and then, of course, they come together, they work together to formulate a budget that's agreed upon by both the House and the executive. There are concerns in the budget from the governor in terms of foundation aid. Of course, it was very low. There was a collapsing of expense-driven aid into the budget, rather into foundation aid. So in reality, there was really no increase in foundation aid for ours and many other districts. We are worried about aid caps as well as building aid adjustment. The STAR exemption is also going to be a challenge and the Committee on Special Education placements, if that changes, it eliminates 18, I'm sorry, the state share of reimbursement in terms of supporting those students who were placed in residential schools. All problematic and challenging for school districts, particularly school districts that already don't receive a great deal of funding through the state. Major areas of expense, as we look at it each year, you will notice that the majority of the expense is in salaries and benefits and that's because teaching, instruction, education is a labor-intensive process and those dollars are wrapped up into the high-quality teachers who are in the classrooms with our children. Again, just breaking out so you can see the expense categories as we move forward and employee benefits, people transportation, curriculum instruction, and then other government support as well. In this budget, in this proposed budget, we are recommending paying off an energy performance capital lease for $5.3 million, which reduces the annual debt service, or rather, and reducing the annual debt service by $1 million and also reducing the district's tax levy by $1 million. In our tax certs, it's important to remember that the district is self-funded, so we have expenses each year when folks file tax certs, tax certs, charis, and the district expects to refund about $5 million annually in those challenges. What's good is that the district funds for it, so we don't have to do things like go out and bond, right, go out and take out a loan to pay those tax certs. And we do our reserves based on legal counsel's estimates and, of course, those are audited each year. In terms of employee benefits, the contribution rate for 2021 is 9.53, which is an increase of about 7.5%. We're recommending to use a million from the TRS fund balance reserve to support the increase in the expense. You remember the Teachers Retirement System Reserve, which was created last year? We allocated $1 million into that at the end of the year. This year, we're recommending using from that reserve to do just what it was created to do, was to offset the expenses associated with increases in the TRS system. In terms of ERS, the Employee Retirement System, we're at about 14.6, which is unchanged from this academic year. Health insurance is 3%, which is lower than the industry standards. And again, that's great. Remember, we are in a consortium for health insurance, so we're not relying on the state plan. We have a plan with other school districts in the area and our increase is lower. We're continuing to support one-time-only expenses in terms of facilities and other purchases. And again, this takes the cost and allows us to do it now and then we don't have to worry about relying on it for future budgets. Personnel costs are all in accordance with our collective bargaining units and what is agreed upon at the negotiating table and other contractual increases are about 2% to 4%. Utilities, BOSI services, insurance, transportation, et cetera. Just to get a sense from the enrollment trends, and these are all projections that you've seen before, they're associated with our annual demographic study. District remains relatively flat in terms of our student population. And now we come to our summary of staffing recommendations. And we broke this out a little bit differently this year and hopefully it's easier for folks to see it and make sense of it. So I'll just, I'll go through it. And you will notice that in these recommendations, reflected within these recommendations, really is our goals from our strategic plan. So first and foremost, guidance counselors, we're recommending two full-time equivalent guidance counselors, one at Highlands and one at Eastview. We're recommending two full-time social workers, one at the high school and one at Eastview. We're recommending a .2 for integrated co-teach at MAS, but this is really a collapsing of a previous .8 position into a 1.0, so that's why it's only the .2. We're recommending a 1.0 integrated co-teacher at Ridgway, 1.0 dual-language instructional coach, half for Church Street, half for Eastview. American Sign Language, .4, 2-point, or .2 at the high school and .2 at Rochambeau. Mandarin, .2 at the high school. Avid, .2 at the high school. Music, a 1.0. .4 of that would be at the high school and .6 would be at Highlands. Art, .2 at Ridgway. Technology and industrial arts, .4 at the high school. Office assistant, .71, .5 at Church Street and .21 at Post Road, which gets us to where we'd like to be in terms of supporting those main offices. Security assistant, .2 security assistants, one at Highlands and one at the high school. Personnel assistant, which is cost-neutral, there's no increase in the budget. And this will be at HR, an office assistant, which again is cost-neutral and offset by reduction in BOSI's costs for special education and nursing. Custodial workers, which will be offset by reduction in overtime and subpay. And this will be facilities, again, no increase or no impact on the budget. Grounds worker, .5, cost-neutral, offset by the reduction in overtime and subpay, which will support athletics. We have an office assistant, .4, which will assist with our pre-K and grant-funded position, or rather, I'm sorry, which is grant-funded. And we have recommending an assistant athletic director at a 1.0. Other recommendations, you've heard the board talk about the importance of making sure that we're allowing our students to pursue their passions in terms of career and technical education. We are recommending an increase in the number of slots by 20 that are available for our students to participate in career, technical, and vocational education through BOSI's, which will also include an additional bus. The board has been committed to making sure that when those children are interested in pursuing those endeavors, that we're going to do everything we possibly can to support them up to and including adding more slots if we need to. Summer school, we have additional funding required for eighth-grade prep and college applications as well as regents. Highlands Social Emotional Learning and Mentoring Program, we're gonna support the mentoring program for trauma-informed schoolwork. In athletics, we have summer programs for strength training and speed training as well as SAT prep, which is open to all students, not just athletes. Contracted support for strength and speed training during the school year. We're gonna increase modified offerings for volleyball and basketball at Highlands. We have students who absolutely want more and the board is excited to explore providing those opportunities for our children. In terms of BOSI services, we are looking to expand voter registration opportunities into the future. Communication services, expansion of our voiceover IP and security system, subscription, rather. District-wide, the application of support specialists. We have federal and state reporting services that we're receiving services for. Asset management and annual inventory, you can imagine the undertaking to count everything in the district, right? So chairs, desks, everything. And that asset management and annual inventory needs to take place each year and as well as mandated lead testing. We are looking to be able to support a community liaison that would be in charge of and facilitate things like the BOSI's program, SEL and outreach, parent and guardian outreach, community schools, food pantries, book pantries, clinical care opportunities, all of those, so that we have a go-to person, a point person for our community and our parents and guardians to be able to work with as well as our services. Cybersecurity insurance, we want to make sure that we are prepared in the unlikely event that we fall victim to a cyber attack, but it's important that we are prepared. We're also aligning our resources with ESA in terms of our per pupil allocations in the buildings and increasing instructional materials and supplies accordingly. In terms of our capital, long-range plan in the annual budget, we are looking to fund projects, minor projects, if you will, to the tune of $3 million. Use of one-time-only funds for one-time-only projects, $1.5 million. Capital reserve, continue to fund our capital reserve. Remember, by doing this, we are each year taking off items that would be part of a larger bond. So this is a real great investment that the district committed to several years ago and we're looking to be able to do that again. We're looking to use $10 million of capital reserve funding, which has absolutely no tax impact, right? These are the funds that are available for us to use so that we don't have to raise taxes. We're also looking to engage in an energy management program, which estimated savings is about half a million dollars a year. We're excited about that. We're still working with BOSI's to make that happen. And we're also exploring solar panels. We have a lot of roofs and there is a possibility that we may be able to engage with solar wherein we would spend no money and have no responsibility and liability related to the panels, but reap the benefits of having the panels installed in our district. The Master Planning Committee has been very hard at work and in April will be presenting to the Board of Education so that the Board of Education can contemplate options in terms of our facilities plan three, five, 10, 15 years down the road. It's important to recognize, and I will say this again, but the master planning conversation is separate and apart from the budget conversation. And that's really important to make those. to make those distinctions. The board needs to, even though we're planning right now for, for next year's budget, the board is also engaging in this pre-planning work for the future in terms of master planning. Our proposed capital projects for 2021, they're, they're exciting. New heating and ventilation at, at Highlands, but by the way, the system's 30 years old, and, and we're spending a lot of money in terms of just upkeep and maintenance repairs, so it's definitely time. George Washington, a complete renovation of the original restrooms. That's 1927 construction. Yep. We should, well, they don't build them like that anymore, that's right. Marneke Avenue, new intercom and PA system, as well as the clock system. Again, that's the last school in the district to have those upgrades. Rochambeau, replacement of the domestic water and hot water lines, as well as the restrooms. Also 1931 original, so they did, definitely did the, the community good service. Rochambeau will also install new corridor ceilings and LED lighting, which I am very excited about, because that will really brighten up Rochambeau. If you've been in any of our other schools, if you've been particularly MAS, we did over the summer, and you can see the difference is really dramatic in terms of those new LED lights, not to mention the cost savings is, is fantastic. We like to show the three-part, so that you get a sense of where those dollars go, and this is something we are very proud of, because you'll notice that enormous orange in the middle, that's all of our program. And we're real proud, and the Board of Education is real proud, that that's the, the vast majority of the funding. In my opinion, that is a very healthy three-part, in that al-most all of the, the resources are going toward the educational program. So this just breaks it down another way, and again, if you wanted to explore this document on your own, you can kind of go through, get a sense of what is the administration, what is the program, and what is the capital. So we, we put this in here every year. I don't like to talk about this, because I'm not a doom and gloom type of a person, and certainly, one of the things that we are, and our children are so fortunate, is that the community of White Plains has been extraordinarily supportive of, of its school district. But it is important to remember that there are ramifications if a budget would fail. And the, the most important to remember is that if, if the budget fails, there's another, the board could have a, a second vote, and the board could put the same budget up, or it could modify the, the proposed budget. If, if it fails a second time, then it goes to what's called a contingency budget, and that's, that's a flat-line budget, 0% increase. Nothing, no, no increase there. If we were to see, you know, God forbid that type of a situation, it would be a reduction from this year's budget of about $5.5 million. And I just showed you the three-part budget, and where all the money, you know, most of the money is, and it's in program. And so for us, one of the reasons why we, we keep this set of slides in here is so that everybody in the community understands that there is, there, there is a real negative impact associated with, with a budget that doesn't pass, and, and that's really important. If anyone ever has any questions about that, they could reach out at any time, and we'd be happy to speak with them as well. So once again, moving forward, in terms of the preliminary budget, school district expenditures, 233 million. The increase is at 2.94% within the tax cap, and the tax levy percentage increase is 2.0, I'm sorry, 2.94 and 2.91. In terms of our capital reserve, as you know, this is a savings account that we keep in place, that helps us to reduce costs moving forward, allows us to save money by having funds to be able to work on our facilities, and it is created by voter approval, and you can only spend the money through voter approval, which is why each year, we ask to create, well, some years, we ask to create, but each year, we ask to spend, and we outline how that money is going to be spent. We always, we like to talk about the fact that the estimated cost of, of the capital project, 6.4 million, but at the same time, by using capital reserve, we are reducing, we, we estimate that we're reducing, reducing the cost to the taxpayer of over $2 million, $2.3 million in interest and bond issuance costs that would have been associated with that same amount of money if we were to bond for it. And real big, so that everybody can see it, the use of, of capital reserve has no tax impact. This is money that's already been set aside, and, you know, the voters really need to understand that there's no tax impact there. There is no tax impact, Charlie, I'm happy that you asked. But you know, it's, I, I really stress this, because it, it's an odd thing, right? You don't, you don't, you don't see that all the time, and, and we want to make sure that voters understand that, so I, I hope we made that big enough. And so using the capital reserve, you're going to see that there's a proposition, there's a proposition that will be on the ballot.
Can we put that picture on the ballot?
I don't, we have to ask Mrs. Schoenfeld. I don't know if they let us use graphics. Can I put the no-tax impact on the ballot? Probably not, right? I am really, I am really proud of the team. I am, you know, as you know, a lot of hours go into, go into building these budgets. It doesn't just happen at this time of the year, it's an ongoing conversation all year long, because we're always thinking about the future and what we'll be able to provide for in the future for our children. I'm really proud of, of this proposed budget, in that it's within the tax cap, it's conservative in terms of, of its ability and spending for our kids. It's also taking into consideration reallocating funds to expand program where we can, reallocating funds to hire without increasing, you know, the budget, and at the same time, looking for, looking for ways for us to be able to save money into the future. So I'm excited about this. Of course, we're going to have more conversations leading forward. The budget vote, don't forget, is May what?
May 19th.
May 19th. My mother's birthday. So May 19th is, is an important day. We'll continue to remind everybody throughout the district, polls open 12 o'clock, they close 9 o'clock, and, and we hope to make sure that everybody has all of their questions answered before that day comes. I also want, in advance, want to thank the PTA, as well as the Finance and Audit Committee for all the work that they did, leading up to tonight, and tonight's presentation of the proposed budget. Of course, the board will come back the 27th, I believe, right?
23rd.
Oh, I'm terribly sorry. The 23rd of March, and that is, that is going to be a, a workshop, and then the adoption is, is on the 30th. Any questions from the board?
Finance has been through this a couple of times.
Yeah, I know. In fairness, yeah, we, the board has asked a lot of, yeah.
If you have those questions, Dave, for Charles.
Right.
Said right now.
Thank you.
We did some other deal. We talked about, we talked about sustainability. Let's talk about providing resources in front of our children to make sure that they're getting everything. And would you took off?
Off. Sorry, John. Yeah. And then the other part is, is really talking about the tax cap, the sustainability of it. It's a permanent tax cap now. So it's a, it's a different operating environment, like you talked about on that slide, where you showed what it would look like if we were at 2% every year, what it would look like if we were, what it looks like in actuality.
Right.
But when we, as a district, as we look at it from, from our runway standpoint, we really have to have that two, five, 10-year outlook for our children, for our school system, because if, if we find ourselves in a position where we don't tax to the top of that tax cap limit, those, those dollars are, to get them back, you'd have to pierce the cap at a later, at a later date, and then you're looking at 60%, then you could put the, the children in jeopardy. So it's, it's a very challenging point, it's one of the, one of the things that comes up with the tax cap rules that are interesting. And, and I think, like you mentioned also, the state hasn't finished their work, talking about their funding, what, what things will come up. We know the state certainly has challenges at their level, but if history is any indicator, the district has always done slightly better in the second, with, with the second go, and with, that's exactly it, we're keeping our fingers crossed. And as we go forward, and I know there'll still be discussions, this is, this is preliminary, there's always tweaking to the budget as we move forward, priorities change, and, and just, just things happen, people move into the city, people move out of the city, and we educate the children that come before us, and, and that's, that's what we want to make sure you have the tools, and we need to hear from you about the tools that you need to take care of the children, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a question?
I recall you mentioning that we were going to have a link, but people couldn't easily find her.
Yes.
That total system.
We, we are, yeah, we're working, we're working on that, and I just have to figure out when that's going to be, that's going to be available, but we are.
That whole thing is different.
Correct.
Right.
Yep. Yep, we're working on that.
Yeah, we're always in addition.
Sure. It's great.
The enrollments, why don't we show the enrollment numbers here?
Yep. Well, yes.
So our city White Plains is a bunch of approved development, just to name a few. There's the old White Plains site, there's the old Ford Hill, and there's the side on both growing, and both going to school, and, and multiple others. So I guess my question is, does the district expect that that development will add students to the district, and if so, how does that harmonize with the idea of decreasing enrollment? And if not, if the ideas that the buildings will be built and not add students to the district, then my question is, what's the district's outlook on moving into the future in a city with a population that's increasingly disconnected from the school district? By definition, if more people are moving in and not using the school district, what is the district's outlook on how that impacts the character of our district and its connection to the surrounding community?
So, big questions. I'm going to take the first set first. In that demographic information that's presented during, during the course of proposed budget or budget, it needs to be predicated on what is now, and, and what the demographic projections are now, absent projected enrollment based on, let's say, total build-out of, of new properties. There, there is another set of, of data that you could take a look at. It is on, I believe, I believe we presented on it, maybe in June or July of last year, that does take into consideration what the enrollment would look like rolling in the, the projected increases in housing, which, you're right, it would, it would show a slight increase in, in student population. It's definitely different than the numbers that are right here. The reason we can't put those projections in here when we're planning is it wouldn't give us a true picture in terms of understanding what the budget is and what the circumstances are. But looking at the future, for, for, if those new properties all came online, and all those new properties had the number of students projected or more, yes, the district would have, have an increase in, in students. The district is sort of preparing for, you know, for an increase in students in terms of making sure that our facilities are, are ready to, to handle that in any eventuality. That's part of the master planning process. For folks who are moving into the district, I don't know that there is, and I know that this was only predicated, I think, on if there wasn't going to be an increase in, in enrollment, but I will say, just dealing, you know, dealing with registration and family information and learning and meeting the new folks who are moving into the district, I, I can say that many, many people, when they do move into the district, one of the reasons why they move into the district is, is for the public schools. So while certainly there are, there are folks in our community who utilize private and parochial schools, as in any community, I think the, the majority will always continue to, to utilize the, our, our schools. But we, we do, we keep an eye on, on those, those projections in terms of construction and, and population growth, and, and we continue to, to work with the city on that. Thank you for that question.
There's a slide here that I think we need to look at some of the numbers, I think, just, just some math.
Okay.
Expense categories.
Okay, okay, great. Thanks, Joe.
And Joe, I think it was great you mentioned career and technical training. We have some of our students, not everyone took advantage or was able to take advantage of the program this year, and I think that's kind of a, a real under, undersaid part of, of this budget, where we're, we're really taking an opportunity to provide access to this program for a lot of our students.
Right.
And that really will help them succeed through our schools, and, and that's very important.
I agree, and, and I know, you know, we all agree, and, and you know, one of the things that we would love to be able to see in the future, is we love to be able to see our district offer more of those types of vocational training programs. I know, I think that we as a, as a society, not we in White Plains, but as a nation, really made a mistake, and of course, hindsight's 2020, but we really made a mistake when we moved away from vocational and technical training opportunities in public school. We really wanted to push, and, and you know, there was a good, good reason behind that, and I think it was, you know, good people trying to do good things for kids. But I don't think we should have abandoned those opportunities for our students. I think ultimately, we're feeling it now in the economy. We know in terms of our community partners that there are really good jobs available in the vocations, and they're just waiting for, for folks to be, to be trained and ready to move into them. So, I mean, a, a dream of mine would be to offer some of those opportunities here in the district, and be able to move our students right from here to, to vocation, to additional training or apprenticeship, to, to your school and apprenticeship, whatever the case may be, but more opportunity right here in the district. But until that time, yes, we do need to support it.
And provide the options, you know, to, to ensure success.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to present to you tonight, thank you for the opportunity to talk about something other than coronavirus. I appreciate that, and I look forward to more conversations moving, moving into the future. As always, especially for our, our friends at home, feel free to reach out to us at any time with any questions, we're happy to answer them, and again, thank you very much.
Next, we'll move to our summary action items. We have items from Section 4 through 8. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to take a moment to thank our, our community members for their very generous donations this evening. We are accepting or recommending the acceptance of a mural for the class of 2020 at Ridgway, art supplies, a trumpet, an electric guitar, and amplifier from the Trapp family for the music program, $75 from Michael Stevens, $400 from Mr. and Mrs. Kevin Brown, and $63 from Janet Pulcini for the Brown Family Memorial Scholarship, donations from Angie Garcia, Donna Centone, and Antonella Agudelo for Rochambeau School as well. Thank you all for your generous donations.
Can I have a question on item number 70? And the table number 12, the end of it, if you might, too.
Okay.
Okay.
Any, any questions? All in favor with the correction as noted?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Next, we'll go on to individual action items. We have the, we have the recommended, that the Board of Education determines that the proposed project is described, is a Type II action pursuant to the law, and no further environmental review is required. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have, we have the recommended action, the resolution to approve authorization for expenditures from the Capital Fund Reserve Fund, and authorization to place an abbreviated version of the proposition in the annual meeting notice, and to appear on the ballots of the voting machines used at the annual district meeting due to space constraints.
No increase in taxes.
No increase in taxes.
No increase in taxes. Watermark.
If we can put the picture in.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we'll go to board discussion. I know we met for, we met for the Curriculum Committee, and as always, it was a robust meeting with plenty of materials to peruse afterwards. I don't have, do you have the specifics in front of you?
We basically looked at a mid-year data report.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you, Dave.
All the good data.
Oh, exactly, and this was data that was shared in some aspects of the Equity Meeting, and a lot of work goes into compiling that, presenting it, and we have to give Dr. Hand credit, because then she has to explain it to us.
There's a lot.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot to go through, but even, you know, I know for me, I might pick an arbitrary point to ask, but she's always on point to explain it, so, you know, that's what makes the meeting so robust and successful.
Thank you, Dr. Hand.
And it's just a mid-year snapshot, just to sort of see how we are, you know, toward our goals.
But it was a great discussion.
Yep.
Thank you.
And finance, we did preliminary.
Anything else? Okay. I think, I think that's it. I want to thank, I want to thank John Shepherd and John Nisavitz. More and more, these, these tele, these televised meetings are so important, especially in this environment, so as I said to Frank, you know, what you do, again, contributes to the well-being of all our staff and students, so we thank you for what you do. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.